As LA goes, so goes the nation. That's how significant the numbers here are in Los Angeles because of the population, because of the challenges, and also the opportunities that are presented to this city.
One of those opportunities could end up being ingenious in the way it battles homelessness and crime at the same time. In recent years, the LA City Attorney's Office has issued nuisance abatement lawsuits on property owners whose motels were teeming with crime. If those sites didn't clean up their acts, the city shut them down, allowing developers to move in, purchase them at a discount, make very minor alterations, and turn them into affordable housing. Since these abandoned motels are already there, some could be refurbished and opened to the homeless as early as January. In fact, 500 homeless veterans with government vouchers in hand could be moving in this winter. Celeste Garcia, who is homeless, says other buildings in downtown could also be transformed.
That's great. I think that's a wonderful idea because they're just, they're a menace. They're just sitting there and they're not doing nothing good. Now you're going to be doing something good with them.
Now if only more landlords accepted tenants with these federally funded move-in vouchers.
I know there's a stigma. We have to overcome that stigma because it's important. Everybody plays a role in solving the homeless issue, especially our veterans who've given so much to our country.
Things could always go faster than they are, but we're working very hard. There's a ballot measure that voters will be able to support this coming fall that will help us move even faster.
The city is also asking us, the voters, to pass a $1.2 billion housing bond, a property tax this November to raise even more money for homeless housing in a fight that may require a number of creative solutions. In South LA, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
The city estimates more than 2,000 people have federally funded housing vouchers in hand but have not found places to live. Well, those living on the streets came out in full force during another brainstorming session hosted by St. John's Family Center, a small clinic that helps the poor in South LA. Homeless individuals met with city and county leaders to find some answers, and Anna Marcos was there.
Barbara Phillips isn't just one of the working poor, she's also one of the working homeless. She drives for Uber and Lyft, but she's still having trouble getting enough money together to get a place to live.
My goal is to get my son and myself to like immediate housing. He's a senior this year, and he doesn't deserve to be in this situation, and I feel kind of inadequate, mother.
Is the rent too high?
Phillips and others hope to find answers at this National Health Center Week event, which focuses on homeless solutions. LA County has 47,000 homeless. Close to half are African-American. Even though African-Americans only make up 9% of the population, California counts some 115,000 homeless, and city and county leaders are pressuring Governor Jerry Brown to declare a state of emergency in California.
115,000 people in the state of California is a disaster, and it's an emergency all unto itself, and we need to act accordingly.
The event was put on by St. John's Well Child and Family Center, which provides free health care and counseling to the poor and homeless of South LA. The clinic even has a mobile unit which goes out to where the homeless are, and health care workers say that 27% of the people in the program suffer from hepatitis C. Another 5% suffer from HIV and AIDS, along with many other mental and health issues. Without this program, many of them wouldn't get health care at all.
But just like there is no solution to malnutrition and hunger except food, there is no solution to homelessness except housing.
St. John's may pick up the health care slack, but local leaders say the city, county, and state must pick up the housing slack. Councilmember Marquise Harris-Dawson has been working on a housing bond for the city of LA, which will go on the November ballot. If approved, it would pump $1.5 billion into housing for the homeless.
If this passes, we can build real houses, we can get real people off real streets, and turn real lives around.
For people like Phillips, that kind of real solution can't happen soon enough. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
Community leaders say homelessness in LA has risen by 12% in the last year or two alone, and they're seeing a lot more kids and families. While looking for a job in South LA, a new development may soon be hiring in your area. While that sounds like a great opportunity for some, many others don't think so. Anna Marcos explains.
It's a first for South LA, a mixed-use retail and housing development by a private developer on an empty parking lot, but many of the people don't want it.
They are going to come into South Central and displace thousands of people, and that's absolutely not okay. We know that the single units are going to be going for like $2,000, and in our community, we can't afford that. So we know that this is going to be built for people who are not from our community.
Some groups say higher rents will throw out as many as 43,000 people in the community, but Councilmember Corrin Price supports the Reef Mixed Use Development Project, saying it could help revive South LA.
It's going to, we think, transform the area. We're excited. It's going to be hotel, office space, condos, retail, and an opportunity to really expand and provide some resources in South LA where we've not seen that before.
It's not fair that these kinds of developments are trying to come into our community and tell us that we have nothing good in our community.
The project will be located near main transit lines, but will not include any affordable housing.
He's not here to benefit the interests of the developers who want to build the reef. He has to defend the community.
Still, Price says, he has the developer's commitment to provide about $15 million for future affordable housing and social programs in the area, and a commitment to hire 30% of the workforce locally during construction. Price says residents can give more input, a community in planning meetings, as the project moves forward. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
Price says the project will need close to 3,000 construction workers and could create another 600 permanent jobs. Well, over in the Westlake District, another development is taking shape, but this one is being welcomed with open arms by the whole community. As Gil Reyes explains, Mosaic Gardens at Westlake will soon be home to more than 100 lucky tenants.
A picturesque plot of land overlooking First Street and Glendale Boulevard is the future site of much-needed affordable housing for seniors, the working poor, and the chronically homeless.
It's really hard to find the words to express that this development will have such an impact on the lives of these various populations. I think we're creating hope for people who've had a hard life.
Link Housing, Councilman Mitch O'Farrell and friends break ground on the Mosaic Gardens at Westlake Apartments. When it opens in a couple years, it will house 125 units, more than half of them reserved for the chronically homeless.
We need all hands on deck for this affordable housing crises, and it is a crisis of the highest magnitude facing this city, facing this county.
Councilman Mitch O'Farrell represents the section of the Westlake District. He says LA County's apartment availability rate is low, at just 2.7%. Making matters worse, rents for these scarce one-bedroom apartments have surged in recent years.
The average rent in my district is much higher than $2,000 per month, but the average household income still hovers around $38,000 a year. So my own constituents can't afford to technically even live in my own district.
The city and county of LA are plotting on ways to build more affordable housing. LA voters could be asked to approve one or more measures this fall to fund future projects. In the Westlake District, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Mosaic Gardens at Westlake will also offer physical, mental health, and job placement services for tenants. Rents will dip as low as $528 a month. While a suspect is arrested in connection with a series of break-ins and attempted sexual assaults, a couple of new parklets brings the community together in Palms, and new synthetic soccer fields in the San Fernando Valley kick into high gear. All these stories in City B. A suspect wanted in connection with several home robberies and attempted sexual assaults in Echo Park, East Hollywood and Silver Lake, was arrested one day after officials offered a $35,000 reward for information leading to his arrest and conviction. The suspect was caught on surveillance video in at least eight cases since the first one took place on August 1st.
We need to send a very strong message that this behavior will not be tolerated.
Two new parklets were unveiled in the community of Palms. These parklets, which also feature a garden, are located a block apart on Motor Avenue. They were proposed by Mayor Eric Garcetti and supported by Councilmember Paul Caress, as well as the Palms community. Officials say they'll provide much-needed restful and pleasant gathering places for the greater neighborhood.
It's so beautiful. It's a pretty little oasis in the middle of a busy city.
So food is being grown, and people sit and socialize, but they can also grab a strawberry and eat it at the same time.
Say goodbye to dirt and rock as three new synthetic turf soccer fields begin to take shape at Witset Fields Park. The Department of Recreation and Parks, along with Councilmember Paul Krikorian, held a groundbreaking ceremony to mark the beginning of the project. The large existing soccer fields, as well as two smaller ones, will be renovated. The synthetic fields will increase water conservation efforts and provide a new and consistent playing surface for soccer players of all ages.
This is going to be the model of soccer facilities for the San Fernando Valley.
If you are a senior and you have a computer, well, you're one of the lucky ones. You can share photos of your grandchildren and talk with them online. But many other low-income seniors can't do that because they don't have a computer. As Gil Reyes shows us, the city is hoping to change that. Gil?
Well, Yana, as you know, we've covered extensively the rollout of these free-hour cycle computers in low-income neighborhoods, also at summer camp for disadvantaged children. But this is the first such rollout in a low-income housing community for seniors, so they too could bridge the digital divide. How do you feel?
Yeah, I'm so happy.
Young Ju Burnett is among the 90 tenants in the senior living community in Jefferson Park receiving free computers, Wi-Fi included.
They all go through a computer training course, which they just finished, and we'll actually be assisting them inside their units, hooking up the computers to make sure they're 100% working and they're ready to be used.
Hello. Good morning.
Good morning.
It's the latest giveaway in the Hour Cycle LA Program. Hour Cycle has taken thousands of old City of LA computers, and instead of throwing them away, repairs them for people in need. The city's Information Technology Agency, or ITA, came up with the idea. It hired the nonprofit group Human IT to do the repairs, and together, they work with the housing authority of the city of Los Angeles to find recipients.
Not only do you have inter-agency collaboration here, but you have summer youth workers earning $10.50 an hour, just gaining valuable experience, helping us distribute this technology. So, I mean, it's a perfect marriage of all these sort of entities coming together for a really good cause.
Johann Palacios, a paid student intern from Contreras Learning Academy, is also helping the mostly Korean-American tenants reconnect with family back in Korea through email. Many of them have never owned a computer. This class teaches the basics.
We should like get back to the community. Doesn't matter like to who, it's just as long as you do something helpful. Like personally, I feel like really good about it.
A lot of people are physically disabled, so they can't leave this location. So now they really have the world at their fingertips.
By finally entering the digital age. In Jefferson Park, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Since its launch a year and a half ago, Hour Cycle has given away refurbished computers to underserved areas in Koreatown, Baldwin Village, and San Pedro. Well, turning now to the port of LA, where a gateway to the sea has opened for students at Cal State Dominguez Hills and Harbor College. And it's a chance for them to take the plunge at one of the largest and busiest ports. Rasha Goel has more.
And in fact, many of us, like myself, were the first in our, in our families to graduate from college. And also, I was the first in my family to get a graduate degree. I've met a lot of the students and their families, and we have a lot of similarities.
And that's why Executive Director at the Port of Los Angeles, Jean Sirocca, is hoping that the signing of this memorandum of understanding with California State University Dominguez Hills and Los Angeles Harbor College will help boost interest in a career at the port of LA.
They're teaming up with the Port of Los Angeles to ensure our students enter the job market prepared, competitive, and confident.
The agreement will train students who are interested in careers in port operations and logistics.
Our students from the community, at whatever level and whatever their career goals may be, is certainly going to benefit from this great opportunity.
15 paid internships will be available to students who are studying global logistics or a related field. In addition, employees from the Port of Los Angeles will also visit both campuses as guest lecturers.
And we'll ask the students what their likes and dislikes are, so we can match up maybe some areas of strength with what our department wants to do, but also if there's an area that needs improvement and they want to really hone up on certain skills, we can maybe match that skill set up as well.
Officials say it's truly a rare opportunity to work one-on-one with port professionals and learn firsthand from their experiences.
This kind of partnership, a partnership between a community college, a four-year college, and a business and industry, that's not the norm, but it should be. And what we're hoping is that this MOU and what we're doing will serve as a model for other industry leaders to engage in.
And for today, it's the first step in engaging and exposing students to jobs right in their own backyard. In San Pedro, I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
The Port of LA facilitates more than 133,000 jobs in the city of LA and 2.8 million jobs nationwide. Well, from a career on the sea to a career in the sciences, if your child has a knack for math and research, they could help find cures for deadly diseases through a program at Cedar Sinai. Gil Reyes reports on stem cell research as a cutting-edge career.
High school kids aspiring to be doctors and scientists one day get to live out their dreams for a week, working in professional laboratories over the summer.
It's the type of work that usually people my age don't get the chance to do, so it's honestly a great experience to go and use resources that aren't really available to people my age.
Cedar Sinai Medical Center opens its research labs to around 20 LA Unified High School students during its minors in research program.
We have a one-week time for the students to immerse themselves in stem cells in the laboratory and see our scientists working day-to-day and how we're using stem cells to both treat and model human diseases.
Clive Svenson of the Regenerative Medicine Institute calls stem cell research "the most cutting-edge area of science." It makes the use of pluripotent stem cells, which can be programmed to produce any cell in the human body. This could one day cure Crohn's disease, juvenile diabetes, spinal cord injuries, even baldness. These young people could be administering treatments one day. Today, they're apprentices.
So we break them up into groups of two or three, and we pair them with scientists from the institute, and they will have a project that they will work on in the laboratory.
At the end of the week, the interns will present their findings to around 100 professional scientists. Palisades Charter High School student Orben Shlomo calls it "a chance of a lifetime."
And so actual lab experience, hands-on with the mentors, is great. And I also get a paper out of it, and so I got my name on a paper published in some magazine, and that's great.
Great, all right, and just a sample of greater things to come for these budding young scientists. At Cedar Sinai Medical Center, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Cedar Sinai is home to one of the top institutes for stem cell research, research that might one day also cure Alzheimer's and heart disease. But being able to find those cures begins early by laying the groundwork for good study habits. As the new school year gets underway, it's important that kids have the supplies they need to learn and excel. As Anna Marcos shows us, some kids in Watts are off to a great start.
In Watts, getting kids ready for another school year is reason enough for a block party. This one, the Watts Back-to-School Community Block Party, has become a seven-year tradition. One of the highlights, a backpack giveaway for 550 lucky schoolchildren.
Well, what's going to happen is they don't have to cry when they go to school the first day, with other children having backpacks, and they don't have any backpacks. And it makes it look as if nobody cares about them because the parents is not working and they can't do it.
Many kids and families in the neighborhood come from poverty or disadvantaged backgrounds, and a backpack full of school supplies is a pretty big deal.
To see the joy and the expressions of joy on these kids' faces, as well as the parents, it just does my heart good. This community has endured a lot.
To sweeten the deal, event organizers are also giving the kids a $5 coupon to start a savings account. Enticements to do well in school, definitely.
We know for research that a kid that starts savings at a very early age, they have seven times more chances to finish college. So that's why it's so important for us to create that habit.
It makes them have the love when they go back into the classroom, not the hate. Because if you have love, you won't bother people. But if you go in there with hate, you're not going to study too well and get along with the rest of them.
A little folk wisdom, a backpack, some face painting, and some burgers. Sounds like the recipe for a great start to a brand-new school year. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
Now, in addition to supplies, books also play a huge role in our students' success. But did you know that 31 million children in the US don't have access to books in their home, including those right here in LA? But as Gil Reyes reports, generous donations are helping to change that. And this is the back of the book.
Storytime at the Women, Infants, and Children Center in Watts comes with a surprise this week: free children's books for center recipients like Kayvon Rotan and her kids.
Um, I love it. It's, it's, my kids love to read. I love to read to them, you know? It's just awesome.
The giveaway courtesy of the Books Across America Program. Books Across America is an effort announced on the Dr. Oz Show to deliver much-needed books to families in need. In a week's time, in May, 45,000 books nationwide were collected.
People were really generous. We were so surprised, and the WIC centers, over 700 of them, are distributing them to low-income families. So they're getting it in the hands of moms, dads, caregivers of children under the age of five, which is exactly what we wanted.
Renee Frazier of Frazier Communications says reading to kids during those first five years is critical for successful childhood development and academic success. Women, Infants, and Children, or WIC centers like this one, primarily offer food services to struggling families, but opened its doors for the book giveaway as another way to help. This WIC center is located in the Watts Health Center.
A good majority of our patients, but WIC is open to the community. We have actually five WIC sites.
Sandra Brooks is children's librarian at the nearby Watts Library. She has advice for parents beyond books.
If you're having a problem reading to your child, pick up a newspaper, or a book, or just tell them what you're doing. You don't have to do anything special. If you're doing something, you're going to the grocery store, and you're making a list, tell them, "I'm putting milk on this list, I'm putting bananas on this list." Children love to hear your voice, so always talk to them.
And help ensure their future success. In Watts, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
The Dr. Oz Show worked with First Five California and UPS to collect and deliver the books all across the country. Well, LAX has gone to the dogs, but that's a good thing if you travel with your beloved four-legged friend. Rasha Goel shows us how LAX is giving our canine companions the first-class treatment.
Don't worry about stepping into it, because LAX is taking care of it. Eight indoor animal relief stations and three outdoor stations are now open at LAX and will give our four-legged friends and passengers some relief while waiting for their flights.
Our guests that are traveling with service animals and pets will now have the convenience of staying inside our terminal concourses, not having to leave their boarding areas for their pets to be relieved and go through security. So this is a very effective and efficient way of our passengers being able to come through security one time, and then when needed, have a facility here for their pets to find relief.
With a total of 11 stations, LAX has the highest number of animal relief stations in any other airport in the United States. And not only will these stations be helpful for the passengers, but they'll also be helpful for the dogs that work here.
The opening of the stations coincided with this year's National Work Like a Dog Day, which gave airport officials an opportunity to honor service, law enforcement, and therapy animals at LAX.
Our pups roam throughout the terminals to provide affection and comfort that again relieves some of the stress and anxiety that some passengers experience when traveling through airports.
LAX's pup program, or Pets Un-stressing Passengers, currently has 55 volunteer dogs and is the largest therapy dog program among all US airports.
They just really needed to be with the dog, and they couldn't believe there was one at LAX of all places.
With the relief stations, LAX is returning the love that our animal friends give us every day. At LAX, I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
Now, if you want more information on where the relief stations are located, visit lawa.org/welcomeLAX. While an art exhibit highlights the creative flair of LA artists, grab your family and friends for an outdoor movie screening in Silver Lake, and if you ever wanted to spend more time at Grand Central Market, well, now you can. All this and this week's things to do. As part of an ongoing series, Made in LA 2016, A, The Though Only, highlights the practices of artists working throughout Los Angeles and the surrounding areas. It addresses Los Angeles as a center of activity and reveals how artists move fluidly between contexts and respond to their local conditions. Made in LA 2016 extends into dance, fashion, literature, music, film, and performance. It closes on August 28th, so don't miss it. For more, visit hammer.ucla.edu. Join the Silver Lake Picture Show for its 15th anniversary screening of Super Troopers. As always, show up early for free musical performance and short film from local artists to get the best spot and to eat delicious food from local restaurants. The screening takes place on September 1st at 7:00 PM at the Sunset Triangle Plaza located at 1523 Griffith Park Boulevard. For more, visit silverlakepictureshow.com. Ever wanted to enjoy Grand Central Market a little bit longer? Well, now you can, as it launches summer nights by expanding their hours every evening until 10:00 PM. Along with special programming, you can expect live music, evening menu specials, a massive happy hour, and free shuttle services to a wide range of entertainment venues. Most of the market's vendors will remain open until the very end, so take your time, sit back, and relax. For more, visit grandcentralmarket.com. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kay, and from all of us here at LA This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
Hey, buddy, what's shaking?
We're not prepared for an earthquake.
I love the rain.
We're not prepared for a flood.
Sure, in the movies, this is all pretend, but in real life, you gotta be prepared for any type of an emergency. You can't predict, but you can prepare.
Yeah!
How'd you know?
The ball called. Be prepared at lafd.org.
Hi, I'm Shannon Lamerk-Park. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35, our city, our channel. You're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35, our city, our channel.
Good morning and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. I'm Mitchell Englander. Today is Wednesday, August 24th. Mr. Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Blumenfeld, Bonin, Buscaino, Sodio, and Fuentes, Herrs, Doss, and Cuarres, Correan, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rue, West, and 10 members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you very much. First order of business, please.
Approve of the minutes.
Okay, Mr. Blumenfeld moves. Mr. Bonin seconds. Next item, please.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Okay, Mr. Fuentes moves. Mr. Cuarres, seconds. Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Mr. President, Department of Building and Safety recommends that Items 1A, B, D, F, I, L, P, Q, and X be received and filed inasmuch as the liens were paid in full, that Item 1J be received and filed inasmuch as the initial fees were paid and the late fees were rescinded, that Item 1E be reduced to $939.40 due to partial payment, and that Item 1M be received and filed inasmuch as the subject property was determined to be an owner-occupied, single-family dwelling, and thus exempt from lien processing. It should also be noted for the record that Item 2 is subject to the approval of the mayor. And that revised Planning and Land Use Management Committee reports for Items 4 and 5 have been submitted and circulated for council's consideration. Further, there is a request to refer Item 6 back to the Planning and Land Use Management Committee.
Okay, without objection. Colleagues, do we have any specials on those?
Well, Mr. President, Item 1 is an item notice for public hearing. We do have cards.
Okay, we'll go ahead and hold it for cards, then?
Very good, sir. Items 2 through 13 are items for which public hearings have been held. For Item 2, the city clerk reports that the weighted value of the supporting ballots exceeds the weighted value of the opposing ballots, 77.08% to 22.92%. A majority protest is not found to exist, and the proposed establishment may be authorized.
Okay, so those items are before us. Colleagues, do we have any items that you'd wish to call special? Mr. Rue.
Item number nine, continue it for two weeks.
And, Mr. President, two weeks brings us to September 7.
Then that'll be the order without objection. Okay, great. Thank you very much. No other specials? I believe there's a request to move Item 6 to refer back to the Planning and Land Use Committee. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. You, you've done that already.
Great. Okay, so with that, colleagues, we'll go ahead and open the roll on those items, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Great, thank you very much. Next items, please.
And, Mr. President, those ordinances-
Excuse me for one second. I'd like to recognize Councilmember O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President. Item 7, forthwith, please.
All right, forthwith, without objection. That'll be the order per your request. Thank you very much. Next items, please.
Very good, sir. And those ordinances will go over one week for a second reading unless reconsidered later with 12 members. That brings us to Items 14 through 29. There are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open the roll for consideration on those items, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those items are now before us. Do we have cards?
Mr. President, we do have cards on 18, 19, 25, and 26.
Colleagues, do we have any other items you wish to call special? Seeing none, we'll open the roll on the remaining items, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Great, thank you.
And, Mr. President, there's been a request to send Items 17, 23, and 24 forthwith.
Okay, that'll be the order without objection. Colleagues, thank you very much. Next items, please.
Mr. President, Items 30 through 34 are items scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold them on the desk?
Um, let me refer first to Councilmember Correan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Items 30 through 34 are settlement recommendations. Budget and finances considered each of those, and recommends approval of the city attorney's recommendations. Those matters can be considered in open session unless members have questions or concerns.
Okay, that's fine. We have a card on 31, so we'll go ahead and hold 31 on the desk for now. We'll take up the remaining items unless any colleagues wish to call those special. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and open the roll.
Mr. President, pardon me, sir. I do need to read those settlement amounts.
Oh, yes, please.
For Item 30, in the case entitled Astrid Bryan versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend $230,000 in settlement. For Item 32, in the case entitled David Burwell et al. versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend $496,446.85 in settlement. For Item 33, in the case entitled Curtis Wright versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend $4.5 million in settlement. And for Item 34, in the case entitled Janet Anderson et al. versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend $21,500 in settlement and to provide additional parking spaces, accessible paths of travel, and ADA accessible public restrooms in settlement.
All right, so we'll go ahead and open the roll on those items. Those are 32, 33, and 34. And Item 30, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. Thank you very much. Next items, please.
Mr. President, that takes council to presentations or items called special.
Okay, we'll go ahead and take the items called special at this point. We can go ahead and take Item 31 first. Okay, Item 31, we have one card, Mr. Eric Previn. Mr. Previn? Okay, Sergeant, if you can check outside in the hall and see if Mr. Previn is here. If he is, he can come in and speak since there is no other standing room or seats. After his speaking, you can help him back out, but at least he'll give the opportunity to certainly come in and speak. John Walsh, we'll go ahead while the sergeant is looking. And all items have already been brought up on the agenda, so if any other speaker cards were to come in, we've already considered all speaker cards on all items, so we truly appreciate it. Thank you very much. Mr. Walsh, we have items, and you'll stay one minute on each item. Mr. Walsh, you do come to these chambers at every meeting, so you know the rules. One minute on each item. You have a card on Item 1, Item 7. I'm sorry, Item 18, 19. You have two cards on public comment. You can only have one, as you know, so you have three cards total for three minutes for one minute each.
So you're not going to hold public, general public comment now. John Walsh, welcome. If you don't get a free basketball, come to me.
Stay on the agenda, please, Mr. Walsh, as you know. You know the rules. That'll be your fair and final warning.
Okay, number one, hearing protest, building and safety. They do a pretty good job, but remember, if there are any violations in your unit where you live and the landlord doesn't repair it, go to the city, and then you don't pay your rent to the landlord anymore. You pay it to the city till the landlord fixes it. That's very, very important. Number 18, this is $21 million for ambulances and one helicopter. But when you call for the emergency, you have to wait a half an hour, an hour. Why? Because right now, you have 15 fewer ambulances than you are supposed to, than you are budgeted for. So I just want you to know that our lives are in danger, but don't worry about you up here. They have special ambulances just for the mayor and his boyfriend. Number 19, so that's $21 million for adopted budget for 15 rescue ambulances. We are now, and I want the paper, I want the media to say, we are 15 ambulances short at this very damn moment, and there it is, right there. Yeah, they don't give a damn. Of the funding to finance costs associated with public parking near community apartments. Public parking? Well, I don't have any free public parking. Does anybody here have free public parking? No, no, no. If you, if you're hooked in here, what happens? If you're hooked in with the, with the mayor or his boyfriend, Glenn Dake, or somebody, what happens is that you get a free apartment. You get an apartment, you go, you put right at the head of the line. If you can make friends with anybody up here, you put on the top of the list for, for city apartments. And then you get free parking, you get everything. You get everything but a blowjob from the mayor. That you have HollywoodHighlands.org.
All right. All right. Let me ask, before we take any additional cards, let me, let me ask the folks that are here visiting City Hall, how many here, this is the first time you've been here to council chambers to City Hall, by a show of hands? All right, quite a few, quite a few new ones. I wanted to welcome you to City Hall, and, and before I explained and Mr. Walsh went up, I figured you might get a taste of what we experience each and every day in public comment. Now, with that, we do have a beautiful thing in this country, and it's called freedom of speech. And we have the ability to say just about anything at the microphone. Now, unfortunately, we do have some folks that, that come every day, and, which is fine, everybody's welcome, and they fill out a card on every single item. Mr. Walsh has been doing it for many, many years. We know him well. And there's some others as well, which I'm sure you'll hear from soon enough. And they share just about everything you can fathom and imagine. And oftentimes, we let them know as well that we have guests, and particularly schoolchildren, that are visiting here, but many of them aren't responsive to that. So with that, though, we follow the rules, the regulations, and the freedoms that we enjoy every day in this country, and I thank them for reminding of, of those freedoms and the people that sacrifice themselves to provide the freedoms that we enjoy. And welcome you all to your Los Angeles City Council, so thank you very much. Now, with that, we've got yet another one that I was just telling you about. His name is Mr. Eric Previn. And so, Mr. Previn, I will remind you of the rules, even though you are here every day and know them well. You will speak for one minute on the particular item only, and you have a card on 18, 19, 24, 25, 26, and 31.
Thank you, sir. It is Eric Previn from CD2 Studio City. This is a very exciting day, obviously. The house is packed.
Please, stay on the agenda.
President, I am on the agenda, sir. I'm just addressing the community. Item 18, as was pointed out, is for some ambulances and one additional helicopter. This is a $21 million charge, so hopefully this is the right time to be bulking up on that stuff. I know it is critically important that we have emergency equipment that works, and if you saw the article on July 15th in the New York Times about Bottom Line Nation, it was called, we know that we want to be cautious about doing the opposite of this, which is to engage private equity firms that then turn emergency services into a profit area. That is not something we are for at this time. Item number 19, I just want to say out loud, if Mr. Cuarres would, what it is that we're doing to provide additional public parking for the Pico Robinson Senior Community Center, because how do you provide additional public parking where there is none? It's very, it's of great interest, so if you could, if you could clarify that, that would be awesome. Item number 23, as you know, many of, you know, I also participate in county government, and Sean Rogan runs the Community Development Commission over there, which is a very, very good government, a good group that tries to facilitate all sorts of good programs to bring community development to our various communities in the county. This is a partnership with them, but it's for a company called Emphasis Computer Solutions, Inc. Now, we do a lot of computerizing our problems with the homeless, which I think is really becoming a little bit of an issue. We've got the CES, we've got, there's just a lot of computer operator players moving into this space, and I think tagging the people who are wandering around without services isn't as good as providing those services. So we should really watch these kinds of expenditures as closely as we can. Item 24, just by, is also called occupancy monitoring for affordable housing. We're looking for, we're going to do an RFP on that one, which, of course, we're excited about. Item 25, sir, is big business at the airports, where I have started to take a little bit of an interest. This is legal fighting, endless legal fighting, and there's a big firm that Mr. Bonin is familiar with and Correan called Myers-Navey. They do an adequate job. I'm not sure if they're on this one. And Burke Williams is yet another firm, and they are both seated on the city's secret panel of fancy attorneys used to fight city litigations on our behalf, so thank you for that. Item number 26, Buscaino, there was a little beauty pageant, and it was between Buscaino and O'Farrell, but of course, both are beautiful, but he had to choose one or the other to be the spokesman at the county meeting down in Long Beach, and I believe he's chosen Buscaino, so congratulations, Mr. Buscaino. You'll represent the city well there, I'm sure. And now it's just a brief moment on some of these legal fights. The one that really has caught my attention is, and is a red flag, is the Los Angeles Fire Department case. This is Item number 32. Here we have unpaid overtime for members of the LAPD. Now, how in the world? I mean, these guys do make a fairly decent wage. We have poured an enormous amount. How are we now being sued for this? And if it's by Mr. McNicholas, I'm going to be irritated. This is one of the big players in that space. Item number 31 is, unfortunately, whenever I see incident involving members of the LAPD, it is a signal, it is a tag for some kind of harassment or retaliation. Hopefully, I'm wrong, but we have to get a grip on this inside of the LAPD, because there are so many good cops who just want to do right, and we cannot have it be that when they blow the whistle or step forward to bring light where it's needed, that they are retaliated against, or it cannot happen. It must not happen. It will never happen. We're going to change that culture here in Los Angeles, and let's go Lakers. Thank you.
All right. Sergeants, if you can please show Mr. Previn back to his spot in the hallway where he was waiting. That would be great, since we had a full house, and thank you very much. All right, with that, we're going to go ahead and we'll take, oh, here's, here's another one you'll enjoy. Mr. Herman, on Item 28. You will have one minute on this item. You will stick to the agenda item, Mr. Herman.
First Amendment, freedom of expression.
Stick to the item, 28.
28. Thank you, Mr. Chair. As we go through these conditions of public comment on Items 28, they reflect the scenario of bad business created by a hostile environment in CD12 regarding Englander-Buscaino-
Okay, you're not on the agenda. Stay on that item.
... graffiti and weed abatement. Aren't we all against eyesores and, and agree that we don't want blight in our community? Because if I raise my hands, all of them know that we can't stand blight and eyesores. So why is it that such conditions of transfer, transferring and ordering such abatement has become such a hostile environment? All we're trying to do is save our homes, and instead, Department of Building Safety steps in with services to provide the West Valley Alliance solely for the benefit of Council District 12, when there are 15 other councils, right, Mr. Cuarres?
Okay, you're not on the, stick to the topic. That's the last fair and final warning.
That Item 28, under Mitch Englander and relative funding for this council's action, we see that there was no approval of transparency by the public for the $60,000 of Council District 12 portion of street furniture systematic discrimination, once again, systematic discrimination based on all individuals here today, on the right and on the left. You've created, through your motion on Item 28, funding for additional graffiti and weed abatement. You waste a taxpayer's money, and on our behalf, fuck you, Englander.
All right, thank you very much. Have a seat. Thank you. Oh, that's just the warm-up act, guys. We, we, we always save the best for last. All right. Antonio Ramirez, Item 26. Ms. Ramirez, you will be reminded to stay on topic. Antonio Ramirez, item 26. Ms. Ramirez, you will be reminded to stay on topic on item 26. If you're off topic, you'll forfeit your time. And you'll stay on topic on item 26 and 26-
First Amendment censorship, thank you.
Only.
So what else is new? Thank you. Please, public safety. This is the valet parking operator permit. And we are staying on topic, Mitchell Englander, who believes in First Amendment censorship. But okay. What I am very concerned is that many people have valet parkers-
So you're on the wrong item, ma'am. 26 is the designate one council member as an alternative voting delegate.
You said 26 or?
26, the card you filled out, as you do every day.
I did. I'm on 26. We're talking about the valet parking operator permit, is it not?
No, that is not item 26. And I'm not sure what agenda you're referring to.
26 or 46?
26, ma'am.
I'm looking at 26. Um, haha, I'm looking on the wrong agenda.
Oh, you're, that was yesterday's agenda, ma'am.
That was agenda.
You already spoke yesterday on that agenda item as well.
Yeah. Well, can we deport all the illegal wetbacks and gang bangers?
Thank you very much. You're off topic. Your time is up. Thank you very much.
God bless Donald Trump.
Thank you. Okay.
Aurora and Sheriff Joe Arpaio.
Now you're disrupting the meeting. We're going to ask you to leave the council chambers. That was the fifth warning. So sergeants, please show her out. Thank you. Everybody's yelling out, the audience, do you feel that this meeting was disrupted? Yeah, okay. Ms. Ramirez? Thank you. Okay, with that, we're going to go ahead and open item 31.
Mr. President, for item 31, in the case entitled Raven-Vinson et al. versus City of Los Angeles et al., there is a recommendation to expend $450,000 in settlement.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll go ahead and open the roll on this item, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
All right, thank you very much.
Mr. President, with 12 members now, would you like to reconsider the ordinances?
Yes, please. Let's go ahead and do that. We'll go ahead and open the roll on those ordinances.
And those would be items 2, 3, 4, and 5.
Correct. Okay, so we'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Right, thank you very much.
Those matters are now before you, sir.
Okay, so those items are now before us. We'll go ahead and open the roll for consideration, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Okay, those are approved. Next item, please.
Mr. President, the Department of Building and Safety asks that item 1T be continued to September 7. That's 1T, sir.
1T, okay, that'll be continued per their recommendation. Without objection, that'll be the order. Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Mr. President, that leaves items 18, 19, 25, and 26 for votes.
Let's go ahead and take up 25 for cards. So 25, we do have a card from Diane Sembreno, but it also notes on here not to speak. So I'm not sure if that's just a card wanting to show on the official file that the card was filled out. Is that correct? Okay, we'll go ahead and note and file that your card was filled out. Denny Schneider, the same? Denny, okay, come on up. Yes, I'm sorry, excuse me for one second. Just wait right there, Mr. Schneider. Mr. Bonin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, colleagues. Before us is the matter that we discussed last week, which is a groundbreaking settlement between Los Angeles World Airports and the neighbors around it, to settle lawsuits and to allow LAX modernization to move forward, to make sure that we have, as I've always said, a world-class airport that is a first-class neighbor. The proposed settlement has won the unanimous endorsement of the Board of Airport Commissioners, a number of the airlines, airport tenants. This morning, the Los Angeles Area Chamber of Commerce came out in support of the deal. It is a huge win-win for the city and for the community around it. And I want just to thank a few people for being the architects and the engineers who helped us get here. Denny Schneider and Robert Ackerman in particular from ARSAQ, the Alliance for Regional Solution to Airport Congestion, Steve Martin, Lisa Trifiletti, and Deborah Lee Flint from Los Angeles World Airports, folks from our city attorney's office, Mr. Blumenfield for steering this through TCT or IG TCT Committee, and in particular Chad Molnar and Omar Palito from my staff. This was a hard thing to get to, and it's a good thing to be at. And I just want to say thank you.
Okay, Mr. Schneider.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you to everybody here. And we already knew how crowded it was going to be, so we didn't bring anyone here, except for a few people from our board who wanted to be here and celebrate this. This agreement is a win-win for everybody. And the MOU does something very unique. It documents something that we don't have to worry about enforcing, because we're all on the same page. On behalf of ARSAQ and all of the communities surrounding the airport area, we are pleased to say that it's a new dynamic. We are now all working together to make this the safe, secure, and convenient airport that we all wanted. I dedicate this agreement to my visionary deceased wife, Nan, great, great, great friend, Bill Rosendahl, who we all miss, and finally, to my original mentor, because I've only been doing this for 20 years, Roy Hefner. I also want to recognize Robert Ackerman, because he was unable to make it. He had to work today. This whole board and the community appreciate all the efforts that have been put in here. And I just want to make a note that the people in our groups put in over 100,000 man-hours over the last 20 years in getting to this point. And so, we're really pleased to say so. Thank you, everybody. And we will be working together to make this the airport we're proud of. Thank you.
Mr. Blumenfield.
Thank you. Just wanted to say, you know, as Chair of the committee that oversees the airport, I've gotten to see this during the last year. But I wanted to really commend Mr. Bonin, who has been working this, not just as a member of the committee, but as the council member who represents that area for years, when he was both as a council member and before with Mr. Rosendahl. And I just want to assure all of the colleagues, all of our colleagues, that we vetted this in committee, the MOU in closed session, and that this is something that is not only great for dealing with the runway and the media environmental issues, but this is something that paves the way for the future development for $12.5 billion of upgrades at LAX. And it really is going to be good for this city in many, many ways, as we become, as the airport becomes that front door to the modern premier city that Los Angeles can be. And so, thank you to everybody who's made this possible, especially Mr. Bonin. And as the Chair of the committee, I urge your eye vote.
Okay, thank you very much. I also understand we have a few additional folks that were outside wishing to speak on this. And I'm not sure if the sergeant was bringing them in. I'll defer this to Mr. Bonin. Did you know if somebody else was bringing?
I don't know if anybody-
I think Dion had mentioned it. So I'll refer to our city attorney. All right, we'll go ahead and hold that item for one moment. And we'll go ahead and take up items 1, 18, 19, and 26 to vote on.
Yeah, how about Mark Brown, man?
Okay, we'll take up items again. 1, 18, 19, and 26 are before us. We'll go ahead and open the roll on those items, and close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Those are approved. Okay, so what we're going to do is, we're going to go ahead and, we'll do this. We'll note their cards. We have the ability to bring this back on Friday. These are our options. Or we can go ahead and hold the item now, and we'll take it up. We'll hold it on the desk for after council chambers perhaps clears out and thins out a little bit. So we'll hold item 25, which now takes us to presentations. I believe we have, I believe we have one presentation today. Is anybody here for a presentation?
Yeah!
All right, with that, we've got a special presentation. And the mayor, our mayor, Eric Garcetti, is in the House. Let's welcome our mayor, making his way for a special introduction to our podium. All right, so we've got special guests making their way from the back of council chambers. And they are arriving momentarily. But we want to recognize our mayor, Eric Garcetti, and his purple tie, of course. He is in Laker purple. So we recognize. Let's give him a big round of applause to our mayor. We also have our special guest here as well, our city attorney, Mike Fuer, in the House. So, Mr. Fuer, thank you very much for being here as well. All right, we're going to take a momentary recess for one moment, until our special presentation and guest makes his way down to council chambers. So we'll go ahead and take one moment and a recess. Mr. Herman, clear the center chamber. Doesn't matter if we're taking a moment and a pause out of the meeting. So go ahead and stand in the back or have a seat. Do not stand in the center aisle, as you know the rules. to put your hands together for a big, warm welcome for the one, the only, the legendary Kobe Bryant! you don't have media credentials, you'll be asked to leave council chambers. Sergeant, please escort Mr. Herman out of chambers. We've asked him to clear center aisle five times. Please show him outside of center chambers. Thank you.
We all look alike.
It was your bench shot.
Yeah, I know. It was a lot of that going on.
Mr. Huesar, the floor is yours. I believe you've got some special introductions.
We absolutely do, Mr. President. And I don't believe, in my 10 years here in city council, that there's been a more exciting day than today here in the council chambers, as we welcome Kobe Bryant on Mamba Day in the City of Los Angeles. So let me ask this. Are there any Kobe Bryant fans in the building? All right, before we get started, we have a little video we'd like to share with everyone.
Greatest Laker ever!
It's Mamba Day in a gorgeous late afternoon here in Los Angeles. Kobe fans from literally all over the world, out in numbers.
Do I dare ask how much he spent?
About 1,800.
Per ticket? Yes, ma'am.
One city, one team, one uniform, two numbers.
We are here to celebrate greatness. He's the greatest to wear the purple and gold.
But a true sports legend says goodbye tonight.
One of the greatest players ever.
Kobe Bryant says farewell to the NBA.
It's very simple. Get Kobe the ball.
Bryant blocks it. Pump fake on its way, so the defense leads to offense. Here's Kobe again, little stutter step, open free throw line. He's got it again. Bryant hits the outside jump shot. Kobe guarded by Rodney Hood. Kobe goes to the dribble. Kobe underneath, reverse slam is good.
And one.
And the foul. Kobe, three, from the corner, a long two. A long two for Bryant. Got better. Swishes right through for the baseline. Kobe for three. Up it goes, and down it goes. Bryant for three.
Ah, you gotta love it.
Bryant going baseline, and he lays it in. Nearly a dunk. We could call it a half dunk. That's poked by Russell, taken by Kobe. Oh, behind the back. Underneath to Randall. Showtime is back.
Behind the back between the legs.
Love it. Bryant, good shield lifer. Back, forth, lay it up and in with the left hand. Turn it back to the clock, Mamba style. And he's going to go all the way and put it in.
That was almost like a concession basket. I don't know what the Jazz were thinking.
Wirtz looks for help, and he finds Bryant. Three ball. Yes, sir!
There's 40.
A basket equals a 50-point game. Kobe underneath. He's got 51! One minute coming up to play. Kobe with the ball, and the Lakers down four. On its way! It's a one-point game.
He's so tired, he can barely pick his feet up.
Lakers will get a chance to take the lead. And look, who has the ball with half a minute to play. Bryant for the lead. Yes! Kobe Bryant gives the Lakers the lead.
Driving down the middle, all the way to the rim, laying up, no good. Rebound grab. Kobe's got it. Length of the court pass to Clarkson. Clarkson at the rim, slam dunk. Game in the refrigerator, and the Lakers are going to win on Kobe's last night. He's going to score 60. And I don't believe what I just saw.
You couldn't have written this, Mamba Out.
Thank you. Well, if I could invite up to the dais, ladies and gentlemen, Kobe, his wife Vanessa, and his two beautiful daughters Natalia and Gianna, why don't you come up here, please? And Kobe, congratulations. We understand there's another child on the way. Congratulations. This indeed is a special day in the City of Los Angeles, as we acknowledge and celebrate someone who has dedicated themselves to a level of excellence that few have ever seen. So on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, our mayor, Eric Garcetti, Council President Herb Wesson, Council Member Curran Price, our city attorney, Mike Fuer, and the entire city council, we'd love to- city council, we'd love to welcome Kobe Bryant, as we declare today Kobe Bryant Day in the City of Los Angeles. Kobe Bryant's storied career happened not just because he was unbelievably talented. It happened because he was unbelievably driven and dedicated to be the absolute best he could be. On his talent alone, he would have been great, but he put in literally thousands of hours of blood, sweat, and tears, and did the work that elevated his talent to rarefied air. It's been said that Kobe Bryant's talent didn't make him great. Kobe Bryant's legendary work ethic made him great, and let that be a lesson to all of us. And what were the results? And what were the results of this great work ethic? Kobe's thirty-three thousand, six hundred and forty-three points ranks third all time. He won five NBA titles for the Lakers. Each one as special as the next. He had eighteen All-Star appearances and was named the NBA MVP in 2008. But once Kobe Bryant announced his retirement last season, just to make sure that world understood that Kobe Bryant was still Kobe Bryant, he set another record in his last game with our Los Angeles Lakers. As you just saw in that great video, Kobe Bryant is the oldest player to score sixty points in an NBA game, and he did it in his last game, bringing Lakers back from a fifteen-point deficit. It was a classic ending from a class player playing for a class organization. But on this Kobe Bryant Day in the City of Los Angeles, or Mamba Day, we also wanted to thank Kobe for his philanthropy. Along with Vanessa, the Bryants have created the Kobe and Vanessa Bryant Family Foundation, which is dedicated to improving the lives of youth and families in need, and encouraging young people to stay active through sports. In order to make a measurable impact on the critical issues of youth homelessness, the Bryants Foundation partnered with a number of Los Angeles-based organizations, including Step Up On Second, My Friend's Place, and United Way. We want to commend Kobe and Vanessa for their work on youth homelessness. As we often discuss in these chambers, homelessness is one of the top priorities for this council, and thankfully, we now have a comprehensive plan to address homelessness in the City of Los Angeles, and we put a $1.2 billion bond on the ballot for this November. But before homelessness became a critical issue for policymakers in the city to address, Vanessa and Kobe were moving the needle, and we thank them for that. We also want to thank Kobe for serving as the honorary chair of United Way of Greater Los Angeles Annual Home Walk. He volunteers his time to something that's very dear, near to my family's heart, the Make-A-Wish Foundation, NBA Cares, and the Boys and Girls Clubs of America, and he also serves as an ambassador for After School All-Stars. Kobe, you have not only been generous to Lakers fans with all you've given us through basketball, you have been generous to those most in need, and we certainly thank you for that as well. Thank you so much. And one final point before I turn this over to our mayor. You know, we are so proud of everything that Kobe has accomplished and his philanthropy, but one record that I'm sure a lot of Angelinos would agree with, that we really appreciate and is near and dear to all of our hearts, and that is that he has a record for staying with one franchise for over twenty years. And that was the Los Angeles Lakers! You know, sports provides a great relief to people, and in Los Angeles, whether you're rich or poor, whether English is your first or second language, or no matter where you live in LA throughout our incredibly diverse city, when Kobe Bryant and the Lakers were playing, we were all Angelinos, united, watching greatness, the likes of which we will rarely see again. So thank you so much, Kobe, for the memories, for your philanthropy, and for uniting Los Angeles in a way that the Lakers and you only could. Thank you so much. And ladies and gentlemen, now we hear from our great mayor for this great city of Los Angeles, to assist with this presentation, Mayor Eric Garcetti. Yeah, go ahead, let it go. Kobe, Kobe. And Vanessa, and the entire family. It is a great day in LA. Today, purple and gold is all around this town, because the royalty of Lakers is here. Starting first with the Bus family, let me thank Jeannie Buss. Why don't you stand up and say hello to your fans? You and your father, your family had the wisdom to believe in a high school player who had great potential back before high school players were coming into the pros. Los Angeles won. We won not just a great player, but a person who defined what this city's spirit became. You see, Kobe Bryant has taught all of us in Los Angeles that this city has a fighting spirit. It doesn't matter how down you are, it doesn't matter what hardships you face, you keep showing up, you keep practicing, you keep going, and yes, you keep winning. And here in LA, I remember when I was a council member my first or second week on the job, and nobody knew who I was, and they said that politicians need to go on that bus, but I snuck onto the Lakers bus in 2001, and Shaq gave me a bunch of Nestle Crunches to throw to the crowd, and that was the first time I got to meet Kobe Bryant. And I came to know him and the family over the years, not just by what we saw in front of the camera, but what they did behind the scenes. And I appreciate what Councilmember Weezer mentioned, because as a council member in Hollywood, long before discussion on homelessness, Vanessa and Kobe were there, the Ronald McDonald House, helping families that were being treated at Children's Hospital, suffering with some life-threatening illnesses. I saw at My Friend's Place, the only place where young homeless individuals can come and stop in and have a road back of hope, because Hollywood is a place where people come to reinvent themselves and define themselves. But for homeless youth, that means it couldn't go into a tragic direction or a hopeful one. They were there. They represent what this city is capable of, physically, but also spiritually. And that unbreakable spirit that you have demonstrated since you were seventeen years old in this city makes it easy on this 8/24, August 24th, to declare Kobe Bryant Day in the City of Angels. We love that you're fiercely competitive, because so is this town. We love that you're uncommonly loyal at a time when people switch teams like it's a new suit that they're putting on. You're admired by fans, not just here, but when I'm in China, and I say I'm the mayor of Los Angeles, they say, oh, where Kobe's from? You speak Italian, you speak Spanish, you speak basketball in a way that has translated this great sport around the world, and you have been an ambassador. And I want to say one thing, because I'm wearing a pin that has an angel on it. It's part of our effort to bring the Olympics back home to Los Angeles. And this man has not just won, a lot of NBA players check that box off, I got my gold medal, but he has two gold medals and has been a core part of our bid to bring the Olympics back home. So, thank you for that, Kobe, as well. The unforgettable moments at the buzzer inspire us to work harder on the things in our lives. The moment that he snapped an Achilles tendon and still sank two free throws gives us hope that when we're down, we're never out. So Kobe and Vanessa and the entire family, thank you for twenty years of greatness. Thank you for twenty years of helping define what this city is about. Thank you for what you have done. Congratulations. Muchisimas gracias, alcalde. And now, ladies and gentlemen, a loyal Lakers fan, council president Herb Wesson.
Okay, now, I believe, Mr. Bryant, Vanessa, that just about everybody seated around this horseshoe has something to say. However, everybody in this room wants to hear from you. So I'm gonna try to be as brief as I can, but I do want to say, on behalf of the millions of Angelinos that could not be in this chamber, I want to say thank you. On behalf of the sixty thousand people that tonight in LA County will sleep on the streets, I want to say thank you, because you recognize their plight before a lot of us. We are late to the party, but be assured, we are committed to make homelessness the number one issue in Los Angeles, and with your help and others, we will put up a strong fight to make sure that little kids like your daughters and my grandkids never have to sleep on a corner again. So thank you for your leadership. We in Los Angeles need to not take Kobe Bryant for granted. We live in the greatest city in the world. You have spoiled us. We walk the streets as champions. And I tell you, for people that are going through tough times and looking for work, knowing that you were there to lead the Lakers, uplifted them, people in this audience think about the cars driving around the city with the Laker flags and the Kobe flags. Think about all of the times when you're outside, the game is on, he makes a shot, and the whole city hollers. You hear the whole city holler. And we need to be so grateful. And let me tell you why. I can understand why we need to be grateful, because I was born and raised in Cleveland, Ohio. Hey, and other than this year, the last time Cleveland won a championship, I was eleven. But there are twenty-year-old kids walking Los Angeles today that have seen their Lakers go to seven championships, seen us win five. So they are used to winning. LA is a city of champions, and you had a lot to do with that. The last thing I want to say is a real quick story. Paul Corretti, you see this very intimidating gentleman over here, Mr. Bryant, with the Laker jersey on and the glasses? He and I were in Sacramento. The year was 2002. Most of the elected officials in Sacramento were talking trash. The Kings were the number-one seeded team, and they were playing the Lakers. And every day, they would tease us, wait a minute now, I'm almost done. So the leader of the Republican Party, who was from Sacramento, bet that the Kings would destroy the Lakers. He bet me. And let me tell you, if he won, I was supposed to wear a Kings warm-up jersey, dribble a basketball, and ring a cowbell. If I won, he was supposed to wear a Lakers jersey, ring a cowbell, and sing "I Love LA." Oh, I forgot. Had he won, I was supposed to say the LA Kings are our daddies. Well, let me just say this. The Sacramento Kings, let me say this. He did not look good in a LA jersey. He could not sing "LA, I Love LA." And when it was over and you won, I looked him in the eyes, and I grabbed him, pulled him close to me, and I said, who's your daddy? Anyway, ladies, let's give it up for Kobe Bryant!
And now, ladies and gentlemen, the council member who represents Kobe's second home at the Staples, our council member Curran Price.
This is a great day to celebrate, isn't it? Especially when I get confused with being Kobe. That's a real plus. But it's an honor to be here as we celebrate a real champion. And he's been a champion on and off the court. We know about his exploits, of course, on the court. Not as well-known are his philanthropic activities, not only with homeless, but certainly with youth. And so, Kobe, we appreciate your being a very positive role model and making that happen. And, you know, I don't want you to think that I'm stalking you, but I had the pleasure of representing the Forum when you started your, you had your first game, you had eighteen, and now I represent Staples, LA Live, when you had your final exploits. And so I just want you to know that we're so proud of you, and I'm proud to be a member of the city council at a time when we honored Kobe Bryant for Kobe Bryant Day in LA. Are you with me?
Thank you very much. And now our LA city attorney, Mike Fuhrer.
So, I just want to say this. You know, Kobe, you have a lesson that every kid in Los Angeles can learn from. The video mostly depicted your shooting, but what every kid can learn from is your defense. Because every coach always taught me a lesson that you can teach all our kids, is that defense is about playing hard work. It's about being ready to stand up and do what's necessary, because the team needs it. Not because it's glory, but the team needs it. That lesson is for every kid in Los Angeles, be what's necessary to lift up the team. And the team is the city of Los Angeles. The last thing I want to say is this, as the mayor leads our effort to try to bring the Olympics back, I'm thinking 2024, you'll be like forty-five years old, you know, and that'd be kind of an interesting moment to come back, because you're gonna have young legs at forty-five. And what a symbol that would be. Just, I'm just talking one shot, that's all I'm talking about. Anyway, Kobe, congratulations for all you've achieved, but most importantly, for what you are going to achieve for this city.
All right, so I believe that leaves one person at the podium that we've yet to hear from.
That certainly does, Mr. President, but before we do that, and the fans are gonna want to join us on this one, it was someone's special birthday yesterday. So we could all join in singing "Happy Birthday" to our great Kobe Bryant. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Ladies and gentlemen, a big Los Angeles welcome to Kobe Bryant!
I gotta say, when I first came to LA, I never ever thought that this day would ever, ever, would even be possible, first of all. So, thank you. I just want to say thank you to Councilmember Weezer for making today happen. I mean, this is, it's amazing. I think it's a very surreal experience to have a day named after you. And, you know, with your thoughtfulness, and I know without your thoughtfulness, I know we wouldn't be celebrating the day. So, thank you so much for making today happen. Thank you to council members Wesson and Price, and for coming together and hosting us here today. It's an honor to be here with you both, so thank you. And then I also want to say thank you to Mayor Garcetti, you know, for being here. I'm sure, I'm not sure if any of you guys saw this, but do you guys remember the rap video, our mayor did, with Sixth Street Bridge closing? Yeah, so I just want to say that I've learned a lot in my twenty years, but probably, you know, the most important thing that I've learned is that rapping is neither yours nor my purpose in life, so, yeah, neither one of us should quit our day jobs.
More slow jam.
And to my Laker family, the Bus family, Jeannie Buss, Linda Rambis, who are here today, thank you so much. I mean, it's such a I mean, it's such an honor. Thank you. And to spend, to spend 20 years with the same team, the team that was my dream team growing up as a kid, to spend my entire career wearing that golden armor has been a huge blessing and a huge honor. And I thank you guys very much for the opportunity. Thank you. And then, most importantly, I want to say thank you to my beautiful wife and our beautiful daughters. You know, there's nothing more important in the world than the three of you. And we are expecting another baby girl. And so I'm gonna need, Athalia and Gigi, I'm gonna need your help in explaining to our, to your little sister why her father has a day named after her. She's gonna have no idea that I was actually okay at playing basketball. I'm gonna need your help in doing that. And then, you know, when I first came to LA, it was, it was weird. I didn't know anybody here. And so the first hotel the Lakers put me in, they put me in a hotel right by the airport. I didn't know anybody. They gave me per diem money. I had no car, I had nothing. So I would just wander around. I'd literally just walk around LAX, not knowing what the heck was going on, but just looking forward to the next practice and being able to put on that, that, that gold uniform and play for the Los Angeles Lakers in hopes of bringing championships to this wonderful city. And I've been very, very fortunate to be able to say I've been able to do that and been a part of such an amazing legacy. Magic, Kareem, right, Byron Scott, I mean, all the greats, Jerry West, you know, Elgin Baylor. I mean, the list goes on and on and on, all the way down to George Mikan. And so I've been extremely fortunate to be here. To say that today is surreal would be a massive understatement to be standing here in front of you all with this incredible and wonderful city. And I just want to say that after today, this amazing celebration, I hope that this legacy extends beyond basketball. I hope that August 24th and this day becomes a celebration of passion, hard work, dedication, and mentorship. Because teaching the next generation about achieving greatness is really what it's all about. And together as a city, we can do this. This is one team and we only play for one thing here in this city, and that's championships. And inspiring the next generation to achieve their dreams, whatever that dream may be, is the most important thing to do. And we need each other to do it and we certainly will do that. And we certainly will win championship after championship together. So thank you so much for this wonderful, wonderful day. I sincerely appreciate it. Thank you.
We do have, we do have a couple members on the queue. First, Councilmember Corretts.
Well, thank you. And Kobe, I never thought I'd have the opportunity to actually express my gratitude to you for everything you've meant to the city, everything you've done in your career. I'm a big Laker fan. I went to my first Laker game in 1958 when I was three years old. I've seen the best players in the history of basketball play for the Lakers. And I have to say that you're the best of all of them. Many of us that are old enough to remember when you first started and people were saying, "Well, you're kind of Michael Jordan-esque." And most of them said, "Oh, you're, it's all hype. This guy's never gonna be anything that remarkable." Well, you have been amazing for 20 years. We're all so proud of you, everything that you've done on and off the field, just amazing. And then there's the last day. And Babe Ruth didn't hit five home runs on his last day. You have to have had the best last day of a superstar in American sports, in American history. I remember watching it and thinking, "Oh my God, Kobe Bryant could score 20 points on his last game? That would be so cool." And then 30, and then, just amazing. So a fairy tale career from day one to the very last day. And on behalf of everybody in Los Angeles, it's my honor to join in thanking you for everything that you've done.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Corretts, and thank you for not singing. Mr. Kokorian.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Kobe, everybody here acknowledges the extraordinary achievements you've had in your career. But I want to speak to something different than your achievement, and that is your effort. The work ethic that you've demonstrated has really lifted so many and inspired so many. My own son, who's a ball player, blew two ACLs. And throughout his recovery, he was inspired by you and all that you've gone through to continue to work hard and achieve success. But it's gone beyond sports. Your loyalty to this city and staying here through a career, it's almost unprecedented anymore that anybody does that. So you've demonstrated that kind of loyalty to our city and to the weakest and most vulnerable among us. Not just those who go to Laker games, not just those who buy Kobe jerseys, but the people who are sleeping on our streets. And what you and Vanessa have done to lift those people up and not only inspire them, but to give them an opportunity to actually live a life, has really been a great inspiration. And in your new venture that you're beginning this week, I hope that you'll continue to work closely with us. I am working on a, with my colleagues are working on a package of ways that we can bring businesses and jobs back to Los Angeles. And I know through your investments, you'll continue to work with us to help lift people up and give them those opportunities by investing in Los Angeles, just as you have done so much for Los Angeles over these last two decades. So thank you very much and congratulations.
Thank you very, thank you very much. Mr. Buscayana.
Thank you, Mr. President. Kobe, you and I had an opportunity to meet in 2001, the championship. Like the mayor, I was, had the opportunity of riding your bus. And it was a time where LAPD had a recruitment issue. And we found ourselves throwing mini basketballs to the crowd as we're going down, figure, I don't know if you remember, to, an effort to recruit folks to come onto the world's finest law enforcement agency. You've been a champion on and off the field, addressed a number of social issues. You've been very supportive of our police agency, our police department, and the officers who serve day in and day out. We had an opportunity on that bus to speak a little Italian because I know you spent many, your childhood years in Italy. So we say auguri, buona fortuna, and dimando un abbraccio e cent'anni di felicità.
Councilmember O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to acknowledge a few things. You came here as a kid, 17 years old, from Pennsylvania, and in your very first game against the Pistons, you scored 27 points and carried the Lakers to victory. And so throughout your career, we've seen you evolve and grow into this enlightened human being. And in your last year, you handled it with such grace. You are a great example for young men across the United States and the city of Los Angeles. We feel as though you're part of our family because you more or less grew up here and we observe that. And so I think that we have to acknowledge that as a 17-year-old wandering through the airport at LAX, as you just described, how remarkable that is as a teenager and then finishing your career on such a high point. That is also part of your huge legacy that many of us get to live with from now on. So congratulations and thank you for all you've given to Los Angeles.
Councilmember Ruth.
I'm sure you're tired of everyone speaking, but I just wanted to say, on this momentous day, as a proud Angelino and as a council member, I could not let this go without just saying, "Thank you so much." Thank you for everything that you did and thank you.
Mr. Harris-Dawson.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the Bryant family and all the council members that helped bring you here on 8/24 Mamba Day. I just want to stand and thank you for the small, quiet things that you've done throughout this city over the years that don't get a lot of attention. I remember just about a year and a half ago, sitting with you at Crenshaw High School, the parents of Trayvon Martin and the parents of other mothers, parents of other children who lost their lives to gun violence. And so after the media was gone, there was no press at this, this event, there was no fanfare. You and Vanessa rode up, you sat in a room and you just listened to mothers and, and parents tell their stories. And that kind of thing is the kind of thing that helps people get through the very, very tough times. And so we want to thank you from the bottom of our heart for that and for the example that you've given to so many people. Everybody talks about, and there are lots of highlights of the shots that you made. As a Laker fan, I'd sit there biting my nails over the shots you missed. But what was most important and what stood out about you the most is that no matter what, you kept shooting. And I think that's a lesson to all of us and a lesson to this city. No matter how many times you get knocked back, keep shooting and you can end up a champion.
Hear, hear. Mr. Fuentes.
You know, I'm gonna get in trouble because my wife says I've gotta say something. But honestly, everything has been said. A couple of observations. Thank you so much to the Bryant family. When we talk about Los Angeles, we talk about angels. And folks, today we've got the Bryant family with us. They are angels for Los Angeles. Thank you so much for that. And Kobe, you know, I just want to throw it out there, Mr. Mayor, with your permission, you know, Kevin Johnson, mayor, Sacramento. Hey, after, after you're done, of course, Eric, Mr. Bryant, could we, could we give it up for Kobe Bryant for mayor at one? There we go. Congratulations. Thank you so much for everything that you've done. Keep up the good work.
Well, it is, it is the reason we're trying to bring the Olympics here in, in '24 after his number. So with that, I don't see any other speakers on the queue, so I will turn the podium back over to you, Mr. Weazard.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. If I could ask the mayor to please come up here with us once again. And on behalf of the city of Los Angeles and this council, our mayor, on this 24th day of August, August being number eight, 24, two jerseys that Kobe Bryant wore, eight for the first 10 years, 24 for his second 10 years, we'd love and we will hereby declare today Kobe Bryant Day in the city of Los Angeles!
All right, hear, hear. Kobe, 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 Kobe.
If we can please ask the aisle over here in council chambers to please clear the aisle? If you guys can please clear the aisle so we can make sure that they can make it, please head towards the back, on my right side of council chambers. If you can please head towards the back and exit council chambers if you're on the side back here. That's for staff and media. If you can please clear the aisle on the right side of chambers. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna ask all the members, we're gonna do a group shot in the center of council chambers with Kobe, a group shot in the center of council chambers with council members only. Thank you very much.
One looking right here.
We're the champions, we're the champions.
There's not enough room back there for all you guys. If you're not back there already, forget it. There's not enough room back there. Start clearing the floor, please.
Okay, we have a couple items left. Shh, folks, we have a couple items left. I'm going to ask those that are still in the city council chambers to please keep it down or take your conversations outside. Folks in the council chambers, we still have some official business. Antonia Ramirez, you're disrupting this meeting and yelling out. You're yelling. I'm going to ask you to leave council chambers if you continue to disrupt this meeting. We're back in session. Thank you. Okay, so we're going to go, shh. We're back. If you can shut the back doors, the back doors over here, please, to keep the volume down a little bit. Thank you very much. We can ask those members that are in the middle of council chambers, please either have a seat or step to the back of chambers. Thank you very much. Okay, we have a quick announcement, special guest recognition from council member Mitchell Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. In a bit of kismet, we have visiting here with us over the next couple of weeks, two professional basketball players from Belgium who just had the great pleasure of meeting one of their idols, Kobe Bryant, and they are Jan Batista and Mehdi Karubi, who, yes, players right here. And they are professionals from the European School of Basketball and basketball club Genape, and I want to just welcome them today. Basketball and athletes like Kobe Bryant are indeed an international inspiration across the world. So, gentlemen, welcome and enjoy your visit to Los Angeles.
All right, thank you very much. Welcome. Thank you for being here. All right, we're going to go ahead and turn our attention back to item 25. Mr. Bonin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before we get into the council presentation, we had the public hearing on item 25. There were a few folks from the 11th district, from my district, who were outside of the room and were not afforded the opportunity to speak because it was too crowded to get in. They are here now. I'm going to ask them to stand, those who came to testify in favor. They, in the interest of time for the council, they're going to waive their opportunity to speak, but I just want to acknowledge that they're here and they've come to speak in favor of the settlement agreement. And so, I believe all those who expressed a desire to comment during the public comment, the public hearing on this matter, have done so.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, thank you, and thank you all for being here today on this special day. So with that, we'll go ahead and open the roll on item 25, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Thank you very much. I believe that takes us to general public comment.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, Jim Withrow? Okay, not here. Okay, excuse me, please, don't yell out. You're disrupting the meeting. Mr. John Walsh, one minute on general public comment. Excuse me, that's the third time I've now told you to please. Well, now it's the third time. Thank you. Excuse me?
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, Kobe Bryant for mayor next year. He's the most popular person in this city and he'll kick Garcetti's ass. We need another black mayor. We haven't had a good mayor since the last black mayor. Kobe for mayor. And you didn't give him any time to speak. What did he get? Kobe needs no introduction, so you scumbags gave him about, what, 50 or 60 introductions? I'm telling you right now, what's happening now is that you have pushed Kobe aside and you just jerked off for an hour and a half at Kobe's expense. Kobe Bryant for mayor. Come to HollywoodHighlands.org, we'll draft him for mayor. And on his worst day, he'll make a better mayor than the scumbag that we have now. And I have a right to speak because we want it in court.
Thank you. Oscar Muhammad?
Yes.
But last time I came here to speak, y'all cheated me. Seemed like a Jigabyte mentality going on. Jigabites is full of tricks. He's artificial, he's deceiver, and he's a liar. But we try to be a country that speaks the truth. But anyway, the United States of America still treat a minority outcast inhumane. And we look at the inhumane condition Eric Garcetti got those black Americans under. The city of New York, Chicago, and Philadelphia, and Detroit, Michigan, is very inhumane to black folks. It's not having changed. America is a country of race bigot, race bickering. When would it change? When America would stand up to the rights and obligations to promote freedom for everyone? But the American, but the Judean system neglects the obligation, disrespect the obligation for justice. Black America will never see justice today. We should end misrevenues of the fund, mismanagement of revenues.
Eric Previn?
Thank you, Council President Englander. Yeah. Item number two today on your agenda, you voted twice, first with 11 members and then with 12. I've been chased around this room looking for the ballot count, not the 12 votes or the 11 votes, but, you know, X hundred versus X hundred for the Venice Business Improvement District. There's a high degree of interest in that, and I keep getting the runaround, so it's very, very disappointing. These records should be visible and transparent for these meetings, obviously. Now, moving forward with the quick comment. Basketball is great. This has been a wonderful day, glorious day. Kobe is a treasure, and we all adore that. Thank God for the Lakers. But let me just simply say that these arena deals and a guy named Wes Edens who made one in Wisconsin with Scott Walker to the tune of 250 million taxpayer funds, that guy came to town and told some lies to the county board of supervisors. I wrote a City Watch about it within the last 48 hours or something. Please look at it and please step forward.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Mrs. McAllister, please. Please don't clap, Herman, you're disrupting this meeting. There's no clapping for general public comment. Thank you.
I see why you came in number five, up here, right here, this guy right here, Mitchell. The people know what you're doing up in here. You ran for supervisor, and Mitchell, the guy sitting in the chair, they had a big chair, came up number five. They know what you're doing up in here, nothing. Now, tell the people, we have 100,000 homeless, not 60,000, 100,000, count the ones living with mom, dad, cousins, and relatives. Another thing, you held a meeting in Van Nuys three weeks ago, and on that agenda, because I blasted it all over the web, you wanted to give over $25 million of HUD funds, housing and urban development for a football field. I was outraged. I went on the web and blasted it everywhere, and then next thing I looked up, it was taken off the agenda. How dare you!
Do not yell. If you yell again, if you yell again.
You taking my time?
If you yell again, we've warned you before. You'll lose your time.
You taking my time? How dare you take over $50 million of our money?
Now, your time is up. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. Your time is up. Please, now you're disrupting the meeting. Thank you. Have a seat. Thank you very much. And final speaker, Mr. Herman, for one minute.
Dibble Dwarf, this is my suggestion to you, dibble dwarf. Pay attention to your constituents, not like that un-American dumbass Krikorian who just turned his chair because he knows he's going to get criticized. 54954.3 parentheses, fuck you, Krikorian, you're not an American, I'm an American.
Do not address or threaten members of the, members directly. Speak to the council. Do not yell. We'll cut off your.
I'm not yelling, I'm just making my suggestions.
We have an interpreter that goes into her.
Fuck you, big ears.
Okay, no, you're yelling.
Put your earplugs on. That's what I'm talking about.
You can't yell.
This is America, this is what makes chimp mugs leave, because they can't do their job.
When you're yelling, we have complaints from our translators that they have earpieces on.
Ah, ah, ah. And now, back on order, 42 USC, 1983.
Please don't yell, I'm asking you to keep your voice down.
God bless America and bitcher dwarf for the fifth place loser, big ears.
Thank you very much. So, very much, thank you. Your time is up.
Wettback.
Thank you. So articulate, thank you so much. All right, thank you. All right, I don't believe we have any other general public comment cards. We'll give you your one minute, come on up. We'd already asked you to leave council chambers, but we'll go ahead and give you your one minute.
We hope that the people of you, Los Angeles, rise up against every one of you, with the exception of maybe two to three. Please recall these council members, including these wettbacks, and that is Jose Rizart, Jose Rizart Gil Cedillo, Louis the Wettback over here, Pichi Chango.
Okay, you address the council as a whole.
And all the others. Yes, it is my time. I wait all this time for one minute, okay?
Do not yell. You're going to lose your time.
You are disrespectful, Mitchell Englander, and you try to rob every one of our dignity, our humanity, and our voice. You are the one that's going to go down, not us.
Your last warning not to yell.
In the end, we will win.
Can you cut her mic, please? Just cut her mic. Okay, no yelling out from the council chambers, you're taking her time by doing that.
Crook and thief who's in bed with all his taxi criminal empires, making money under the table, robbing tourists and passengers, and denying them a good, nice ride, their lazy asses. He's a crook, take him down.
Thank you very much. Goodbye. Your time is up. You're still yelling out, now you're disrupting the meeting. No, no, okay, please escort her out. Thank you, escort her out. Thank you. Escort her out. Sergeants, sergeants, please escort her out. Thank you very much. She's still disrupting this meeting. Dion, this is the fourth time that she's been asked to leave the meeting. She came back in, she's disrupting the meeting again. She's disrupted this meeting now multiple times on the same meeting. Thank you very much. We're going to wait for her to be escorted out so we can continue on the meeting. Herman, thank you, goodbye. You're disrupting the meeting again, that's your fifth. Mr. Herman, yelling again. Can you please escort Mr. Herman out, please? He's still yelling and disrupting this meeting. Please escort him out. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Herman. Thank you, Armando. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. All righty. So I believe that concludes the council agenda. Do we have items for posting and referral?
Yes, sir, we do.
Okay, thank you very much, those that be posted and referred. Colleagues, do we have any announcements? Seeing none, do we have adjourning motions? We have. If we can ask everybody in council chambers, out of respect, to please rise as we adjourn in honor and in memory of those who came before us. And Mr. Booskayeno?
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I ask that we adjourn today's council meeting in memory of Maureen Cunningham, who passed away peacefully in her Westchester family home last Saturday, the age of 78. Born in 1938 in County Currie, Ireland, Maureen was a beloved wife, mother, grandmother, church volunteer, and prayer leader who was devoted to God and to Mother Mary, and she loved her family and friends and life. Arriving to the United States in 1956, Maureen met and married her husband Sean in 1959. Sean is a legend in the native Doolac, Ireland. He scored the game-winning goal in 1957 All-Ireland final to give his County Loth, 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 the championship. This last, Maureen and Sean raised three beautiful children, sons Michael and Patrick Cunningham, been a respected developers in the Los Angeles area in the South Bay for over 25 years, while their daughter Noreen Marisich, a dear friend of ours, has been the principal of Mary's Star of the Sea Elementary School in San Pedro for the last 15 years. Ms. Cunningham had a strong faith and was active in her Westchester community as an involved parishioner at St. Jerome's. She is survived by her three loving children and six grandchildren. May she rest in the same peace she has always surrounded herself in and believed in during her time here on earth. Maureen Cunningham, may she rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any others? Yeah, Mr. Rup?
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. Today, I'd like to adjourn in our meeting in the memory of Lois McNeil, who passed away recently at 85 years of age. Lois was born and raised in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania during the Great Depression. She moved to California at the end of World War II, where she attended Franklin High School and married Kenneth W. McNeil in 1948. By age 25, she was a mother of three children. Lois separated from her husband in her late 30s and became a widowed at age 41. 10 years later, she found the love once more in a lasting relationship with Julius Rakasits, the love of her life. Lois worked at Iver's Department Store on Figaro prior to beginning her 24-year career with the City of Los Angeles, 13 of which were with the office of council member John Ferraro. She enjoyed politics, movies, shopping, and gardening. Lois loved to dance and spend time in Palm Springs. Lois's life was a labor of love. She proudly initiated family get-togethers and used her resources to create meaningful and lasting memories. She is survived by her daughters Cynthia and Nancy, son Kenneth, daughter-in-law Mary Lucy, niece Claire Shaw, her life partner Julius Rakasits, several grandchildren and great-grandchildren. Her memorial gathering will be August 27, 2:30, at the Church of the Angels Parish House at 1100 North Avenue 64. May she rest in peace.
All right, thank you very much. And colleagues, I have one as well with great sadness that I ask that we adjourn in memory of Marjorie Sue Tyfer. She passed away unexpectedly on August 10. Marjorie, also known as Margie to all who loved her, was a member of the Granada Hills Women's Club for 21 years. Through her over two-decade involvement with the Granada Hills Women's Club, she held many leadership positions, including president from 2008 to 2010, as well as treasurer and parliamentarian. She also held numerous positions in the Sierra Coangga District of the California Federation of the Women's Clubs. Marjorie was actively involved with her church, the First Presbyterian Church of Granada Hills, with her red hat chapter. Margie was an avid reader, greeting card maker, and she enjoyed working on jigsaw puzzles, shopping, camping, and traveling. Her passing has left a huge void in the hearts of all those of us who knew her. She is survived by her husband Bill, her son and daughter-in-law Will and Jennifer, daughter and son-in-law Amy and Ken, and four grandchildren. She will be missed and remembered by many. That concludes this council meeting, and we are officially adjourned. Be safe.